Help keep them safe as they serve us. For those in authority over us, our president, our national leaders, our governor, our state's leaders, our mayor, city commission, we thank you and pray that you would continue to give them wisdom and guidance to serve you and to serve this city in a just manner. For our civil servants, we pray that you would give them knowledge and skills and ability to continue to serve our community in the best way possible. May the actions that we take here this evening be pleasing unto you. We pray that you would keep us safe as we journey from this place. Lead, guide, and direct us to do your will, and we'll give you the praise and glory. Amen.
Come in the flag, flag salute position. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first I'd consider approval of consent agenda.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to ask that we move Agenda Item Number Five.
Okay, I wanted to make an announcement about that. The Agenda Item Number Five has been withdrawn. The application for rezoning has been withdrawn, so that Agenda Item has been withdrawn. Thank you. I forgot to do that first thing. So that item has been withdrawn, and they did withdraw their application for rezoning. For those of you that are interested in that. Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shaw. I was supposed to announce that, but I forgot it.
If we could look at Item One C, I have a couple of questions, and Cindy has clarified a little bit, but I would like to just make comment if I could on this. Item One C.
Go ahead.
Cindy, where are we at in, and or Justin, in looking at updating our license fees?
We have, we had always planned on doing that as part of our recodification process, and so we've been working with our new council on recodification, and so I think that would provide us a good opportunity to do that simultaneously. And in terms of timeframe, I will, I don't have an exact timeframe tonight, but I will certainly confer and give you a better update at the next meeting.
It's your shot, just not to interrupt the project, but I think we're working to put several work into the commission at the June 6th meeting to relay directly to them.
Great, thank you. One other question I have is, I was looking at the project payment report, and I need to be educated on what is the water taps and Bank First General line item? Those cost for? I saw that.
Let me pull it up right now. The water taps are, those are any, those are fees that we collect when an individual taps into the water system, so that pays for the connection and for the residential meter.
Those are non-refundable too, aren't they?
That's correct.
It's not like a water deposit. A phase of charge department is connected and inspected to.
New connection.
New connection. Anything else?
The Bank First General.
I think that's just the sum of the.
That's actually, that report shows the credits that go into the account, which is people making payments, and the 799-1023 Bank First General, it's just the deposit into the bank, because that report is once, it balances, so it's got a debit and a credit.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion approved. That was second.
Second.
I'm sorry, motion carries. I didn't put a lot to them there. Okay. What? Motion carries. Citizen participants, anyone that's here tonight would like to address the commission now is your time to do so, and it's a three-minute, I think, what, three-minute time limit. Sign the, sign your name up here. Come on up to front.
Hello, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Karen Bays Winslow with the Shawnee Public Library, and I would like to invite you and everyone in the audience to an old-fashioned concert in the park on Sunday, June 5th at 2:00 PM. We're having the Boulevard Brass Quintet, and families are welcome to come out and bring picnic blankets. It's the park right across from the library, and we're also celebrating John Philip Sousa's 100th anniversary. So we hope you can come, and I'm not sure who I give the handouts to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that on the city calendar that we have on the website?
We will add it if it's not.
Just make sure and add it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else here to address the commission? Okay, well, new to the next item, presentation of City Mayor to the Employee of the Month, Angie Gray, Police Department dispatcher.
Is Angie Gray here? Can they get, okay. Well, I'll just go ahead and read this into the record nonetheless. For the month of May, Angie Gray is the Employee of the Month. She's been a, she started with the City of Shawnee in 1997 as a part-time dispatcher, and in January became a full-time dispatcher, January 1999, that is. Over the years, she has quickly gathered information and given updates to assist officers with safely apprehending suspects without incident. Her experience, knowledge, and quick thinking have allowed officers, firemen, and paramedics to remain safe while responding to emergency calls and go home to their families at the end of their shift. She has also been involved in creating in-service training to other dispatchers and making sure skills and knowledge are passed on to others. Dispatchers are responsible for painting a picture with words, so responders are aware of what they're responding to, and Angie has become an expert in providing pertinent information to all those involved. And so for those reasons, Angie is our Employee of the Month. Thank you.
All right, Mayor's Proclamations. Get your job. Vice Mayor, what's it get paid for? Oh, thank you. Okay, this is Community Action Month. Gordon. Gordon. House. Come on up. How are you? Do the fixer takers, okay? Whereas Community Action Agency has, were created when it did not come to the Act of 1964 with some anti-law, and whereas Community Action Agency have a 52-year history of promoting and self-sufficiency for those of limited income, whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency is a member of a national, nationwide network of 1,100 community action agencies and one of 19 agencies in Oklahoma. Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency serves six counties in Central Oklahoma, Cleveland, Lincoln, Payne, Logan, Potawatomi, and Seminole. Whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency continues to lead the efforts in eradicating poverty by assisting families through a variety of programs and services that include transportation, prescription assistance, housing, UTL assistance, senior programs, home weatherization, and many others. And whereas Community Action Agency help people and change lives and embody a spirit of hope and make Oklahoma and better, a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas Oklahoma, whereas Shawnee joins the national effort to designate May, Community Action Month, to celebrate the success story and honor the dedication of volunteers and the personal achievements of individuals who have benefited from the diversity programs of community action. And now therefore, I, for West Main, as Mayor of City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, authorize the best image to hereby proclaim, proclaim the month of May 2016 as Community Action Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, ladies. Anybody like to say something? Go ahead, Gordon.
On behalf of Community Action here in Shawnee, I'm a representative here in the county of Potawatomi County of Gord Cooper Technology, and this is Carol Clay Lee Fox of the Simpson Potawatomi Nation, and this is Tina Lowery from Coca, and she's with the Transportation Department. We are very thankful and grateful for this proclamation and that we are a part of this. We are indeed on rebound this year. We've had our slots, but this year we're doing this, so we're just real grateful. Thank you so much.
Now, the transportation part, that would help out with it.
Yes, yes, we're grateful. Thank you.
Okay, National Law Enforcement Week, for you. National Law Enforcement Week. Whereas in the performance of a mission for welfare and well-being of our communities, law enforcement officers are engaged in a daily basis in hazardous, life-threatening profession, and whereas our citizens' peace of mind comes from the knowledge that these officers are ready, available for crime prevention, crimes and protection of life and property. Whereas in some cases, officers actually give his life in exchange for the welfare of this community, and whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to these brave men and women who have given their lives defending and protecting our city. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy established a national day of commemoration known as National Police Memorial Day in honor of these men and women. And whereas in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our city safe, the vague service should be applauded and held in the highest regard all the, all through the year. For without their commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Thank you for your help to our community in keeping it safe. I now therefore, for West Main, as Mayor of City of Shawnee, here proclaim the week of May the 15th through the 21st to be National Law Enforcement Week. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, we're very lucky in Shawnee, and have the police officers are proud of the community, and we appreciate all the support from the community, so thank you.
Thank you. I will skip over to Item Number Six. Consider a resolution to declare 1989 Ford Shawnee Fire Department Truck Surplus and propping off that as a sale of the item at auction. Chief Drew, you're here.
Chief Tisha wasn't able to be here tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Deputy Chief Starkey in the audience as well, but staff does recommend approval of the resolution. This would authorize a 27-year-old truck to be sold at auction, and we were given no trade-in value. We did attempt to trade it in first for the purchase of another vehicle, but it is, is outside of its useful trade-in value, so.
Live fan. So moved.
Just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe, you said the chief wasn't here. On those, when those are sold, and if it is sold, how does, where are those funds put, and how are they used?
Those funds typically would just come into the general fund. In this budget year, excuse me, the proposed budget for next year, we do have money allocated for two new vehicles, and so those funds, in this case, could certainly be applied to that purchase.
Perfect, thank you. Second.
I have a motion and second. Joe, would you read that resolution, please?
A resolution declaring a certain item of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said item, and authorizing the sale of said item to the public by auction.
That would vote? Motion carries. Item Number Seven, consider the preliminary plat for Shawnee Park located east of Harrison on Transportation Parkway, case number SO6-16, applicant Call Valley Engineering. Justin, Department of Planning, Department of Assembly, recommendation?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. First case we're looking at here today, to give you the location, we're talking north of I-40, east of Harrison Street, along Transportation Parkway on the south, and that's all part of the original planned unit development for Majestic Dominion. A resolution of support for really two projects that are encompassed in this plat, were approved January of 2015. What we're looking at is a total of 108 dwelling units, multifamily residential apartments on two separate lots. On the first lot, states, the state has awarded this point 60 units for the multifamily residential, and these would be market rate quality, but that it'd be income qualified in the actual design of the project. Lot Two, as I understand, has not yet been awarded by the state, but the intent could be anywhere from senior residential housing to, once again, multifamily residential. The plat really contains three total lots, lot one being just under four acres in size. That's again the 60, 60 dwelling units. Lot Two being about three and a half acres, that's the additional 48 dwelling units. And the last tract, which is Tract A, about three acres in size, is really for the stormwater detention for the site, quite a large site. Staff has listed seven conditions for approval, but does recommend approval at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Want to have any questions? Justin? Is this one of the letters for approved application for several, maybe even a year ago?
That's not right, yes.
And it's.
Motion to approve with the seven conditions.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second with the seven conditions. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item Number Eight, consider the preliminary plat for Belmont Park Phase Two located at Acme Road, north of MacArthur Boulevard, case number SO9-16, applicant Belmont, Belmont Park LLC. Dustin.
Thank you again. Okay, next case, Belmont Park Phase Two. Property is approximately eight and a half acres in size located at the northeast corner of MacArthur and Acme. And really, the request we have today is a plat that would propose 20 duplex lots and two commercial lots, again, on that eight and a half acres, which includes a 3.15-acre common area, which again houses the detention for the site. Let's see here. There's really one major issue that we have right now. The plat looks good by staff, engineering. What we're dealing with here is actually a pipeline easement that runs through the property, and unfortunately, the documentation that we have found states that nothing shall be built on such a pipeline easement. We add that as a condition, as the applicant believes they will receive that letter, but again, approval will be based upon receiving that letter from the pipeline easement company.
Are these residential, going to be duplexes, the single homes, or what?
Yes, sir, duplexes on all the lots there, so 20 duplexes. The site is zoned R3 currently, but really, it's the, it's the, the 20 duplex lots and the two commercial that are really abutting MacArthur on the northeast corner.
Is this market, market rate or restricted or?
You know, I'm not quite sure. I think we do have a representative here to answer questions.
Are they going to be like the ones that are just north of it, on the other side of that creek, across Macme Field? The ones that just got built, like south of the apartments?
South of the apartments there.
That's kind of rough.
Oh, I see. Right, right. Well, these would be on separate individual lots as the duplexes. I'm not sure quite the design that they proposed.
Okay, it's not the same folks.
I don't believe the intent is for the pre-income qualified type, type status on those, so as far as I understand, that should be market rate. At that, staff does recommend approval with the three conditions, three conditions listed there.
Any other questions?
Is that right there, obviously, it's in city limits, but is it just south of there that's not in city limits?
Did you south as, also city limits?
It is, it's just west.
Just west, west of there.
Skirts there.
But if you go, if you skirt down MacArthur, and you go north of MacArthur, none of those homes are in, are in city limits, right?
Upon Acme? That's all city limits.
I'm talking down MacArthur?
Yep.
Like across from the gas station where all those homes are that go down towards St. Gregory's?
Yes.
The ones that are north of MacArthur, they're out of city limits?
That's correct.
No, they're in city limits, aren't they?
No, they're out, they're out.
I think there's a short gap there.
Okay, so that, but that eight acres is actually, eight and a half acres is going to be in city limits, okay.
There's a group of them in there that are out of city limits.
Right.
The ones that like to be in, because they're not, part of the people not taking care of the lot, so they want the city to try and.
Oh, Clayton needs is.
Sure.
Storage units and stuff?
These are all served here by city water, city sewer, and definitely in city limits.
I just, we've got duplexes on the corner of, over on the corner of Leo and MacArthur, and then we've got some just north of there. We've got an apartment complex at north of there.
Sure.
And, but the condition, the main condition is going to be if they get a letter to say that there's no gas going through it?
That, well, it's more so that they don't own that easements, they need rights over that easement to, we have at least two or three utility easements that must cross that pipeline easement, so they have to have that approval in order to do so. And I believe the end of the coal sack also sits on that pipeline easement, so.
So they're not building over the pipeline, they're just building on the easement?
It's upon the easement itself, that's correct.
Is this in our comprehensive plan?
What's that? I'm sorry.
The, this area is an R3. Is that shown in our comprehensive?
I believe it shows as residential on that corner, mostly along the arterials that show the commercial uses, but anything north is typically shown as residential.
So R2, R3 is what it's shown as, or just.
Correct, R3 is what it's listed at at this point, since approved for R3 zoning, I believe as one whole property with the Phase One and the Phase Two. So yes, as it sits currently, those lots are zoned R3. The corner lots that are proposed for commercial are zoned C3. So the property is owned for the uses, uses that are going on them.
So now there are five items to be completed before they can move forward, is that correct?
I have four conditions listed for approval.
Okay, you were talking about the letter, I didn't know whether, I didn't remember that being.
Correct. The other, the other two conditions or three conditions are really customary for the preliminary plat.
Okay, heard the discussion, any other questions?
No, not just that.
So, so it is or is not restricted income?
I don't believe it is, I haven't heard that. There may be somebody present to answer more of those questions, but I've not been, it's not been brought to my attention, any requests for tax credits or anything along this line.
It just seems like we've built up that area, like at least over on Leo, and they're redoing, they're finishing up that next phase, and I've seen a lot of construction going on there.
Right, golden acres.
Yeah, golden acres, and I was just, my, I guess my concern is, is, you know, having, I, I don't know, that corner looks like it could be. An eyesore.
If I remember right, the part that goes on MacArthur does have, it's commercial property, right?
It is commercial property, that's correct.
So it's maintaining the commercial.
It's just back up in there, right? Towards the creek.
It is, it is.
It's behind the, it's right, I'd say east of where the condos or where the, you know, where the, whatever they are, apartments or duplex.
Right, it is east of there, I mean, you look on the plat.
Yeah, it's across from the, the gas station, basically, north and west.
All right.
Yes, yes, it would.
I don't know.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Let's vote. Motion carries. Item Number Nine. Consideration of final plat on Rolling Hills Station, Phase One, located northwest corner of Main and Bryan Avenue, case number S11-16, applicant absentee Shawnee Housing Authority. Justin, you're up again.
Thank you again. Okay, so Rolling Hills for the final plat, it was just about two months ago at this time, we approved the preliminary plat here, and what we're looking at is the first phase of the developments, so 13 single-family lots to be built. One actually already does exist, so 12, 12 buildable lots, and the community center along with it. Staff has, has reviewed all construction documentation, finds, finds that it looks good. And just for a recap, really, the whole site's about nine and a half acres in size with proposed 24 single-family residential lots on it. The community center is part of that as well, part of that plat, since it's of the same ownership and directly adjacent, we will have sidewalks upon both Main and on Bryan Street there. Besides that, staff does recommend approval, we have three conditions listed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I remember correctly, when the, when we looked at this, I don't know how long ago, it was, it was real nice, there was going to be like some walkways inside there, like a little, it's almost like a little park area and stuff. Is that still?
That's correct, that is, and that's in fact part of, part of Phase One of the development.
Yeah, it looked really nice.
Be the community center, and just north of the common area, it has the walk path. It's all internal access at this point, which was a big consideration we had really when we included the community center to begin with, so as it is now in the plat proposed in the site designs that we do have, it would be, even for the community center, the parking is actually within the neighborhood itself, within the plat.
Any other questions? Need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. You can have it, Keith.
So you second?
I'll second it, yeah.
A motion and a second, let's vote. Please, you didn't get recorded. Motion carries. Item Number 10, public hearing consideration to approve an ordinance amending the Shawnee Zoning Code, Section 22-165.7, allowing ground floor residential use in the central bistic area, C-4. Justin, again.
Thank you.
Busy night.
Last time here, last time here, I promise. Okay, so, so what I'm proposing here today is actually an ordinance for, it's an ordinance that's really an incremental process. We started in June of 2014 when we updated the zoning code, which was to, first and foremost, before that point, we did not have any allowances for even upper-floor residential at that time downtown, so any grandfathered uses were allowed to stay, but beyond that, we weren't approving any upper-floor residential allowances. When we did update the zoning code in 2014, what we, what we had included was the allowance at that point, within the downtown core district, which I provided maps for here, the allowance for, of course, upper-floor residential. Outside of the downtown core district, we do have the allowance for residential as it is. is. What staff is, again, proposing today is the allowance for ground floor, sorry, ground floor residential with conditions applied to it. So approval would be based on a condition use permit, first and foremost. Secondly, the commercial use must remain the frontage of the site.
So the storefront would still be?
Upon the primary right-of-way is the intent.
And that, so that would still be non-residential on the front?
Absolutely, correct. The commercial use must stay at least fifty percent, it has to be the primary use and the space upon which separation is.
Is this just for the core district or for all?
It's already allowed outside the core district, so we're protecting the character and quality of downtown by making it by condition use permit and not on the frontage of these properties. So by ordinance, we're dictating that the frontage must be commercial at that point.
Does the ordinance include, I didn't see it, but does the ordinance include, like, fire-rated walls for the residential areas and other protections?
That's correct, all of that stands, and it's, the health and safety standards don't change when it comes to our building code and the separation that we do require.
Okay.
What it does, however, allow is honestly more affordable options for those types of housing. It's debatable to say that for ADA accessibility, right now with upper-floor residential, that's gonna require elevator systems, at the very least, to provide that. And not only saying that, once we had made these approvals in 2014, it's been a very hard time for any property owner, really, to provide that housing on upper floor, especially on an individual basis. Just the cost of developing and building downtown is, can be astronomical based on arrangements that have to happen. When you change uses, you really have to bring everything up to code at that point. And that's the major stick that we've had. I've had, as the planning department, a number of people come and inquire about housing downtown. It just hasn't really panned out. We have to find ways to provide residential housing downtown and...
Are the codes, like, the buildings when they were built, they used other materials, asbestos lead, stuff like that?
Sure.
If a person was to get a home loan, then they would have to actually have, like, protection of those kinds of things. Now, are the renters gonna be the ones that are required to change, to make sure that it's asbestos-free and that it's got good filtration, got, you know?
Typically, this would be based on the developer and...
Do we have anything to protect the residents of those places that you see going in there and living there?
Sure, and again, that, again, falls under our code enforcement, that we're actively pursuing downtown.
Okay.
All of that stuff, yes.
So it'll be just like a new construction?
Absolutely, yes.
So anything that was, if there's anything in the future that they find that caused any illnesses or whatnot, it'll be based...
Be protected, correct.
Right, okay.
During this process, incorrect where I'm wrong here, Justin, but a number of questions had come up by the planning commission, and it was the application process, parking was quite a lively discussion, as well as the use by students and the possibilities that that could create for our student population. I believe also there had been some discussion, or quite a bit, from Planning Commissioner Link Cowan in regard to code enforcement.
Sure.
And I think he had asked a number of the questions that Commissioner Dykstra is now asking. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Shawnee to do this kind of action. I do believe that we need to get our codes up today, and I know that you're limited on your staff right now, but again, I'd like to support that when you get that to that point.
I would also add that really, what led me to the condition use permit status is we have such different structures downtown, and again, we bring up ideals such as parking, and how do we have ADA accessible routes to these structures? And it really will take the insight of condition use permit to treat them uniquely each time. So I believe that's the best way to go, and I truly hope that you approve this ordinance today.
You gonna make a motion, Lisa?
Let's, we have to open it for a hearing, see if it's a public hearing. So I'll now open it for a public hearing. Anybody opposed to this ordinance, please, come forward. Anybody in favor of this ordinance, please? Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for this proposal? Saying now, let's declare the hearing closed, now we're ready for a motion.
I am so moved.
Let's have a second. Okay, Joe, you have something you need to read, the title?
Yes, Vice Mayor. An ordinance amending the Shawnee Municipal Code, Chapter 22, Planning and Development, as more specifically set forth herein, to allow for ground floor residential uses as an accessory use within the downtown core district, repealing all ordinance and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for separability.
Okay.
Were there any conditions?
I'm sorry, what?
It's a condition use permit.
Okay, all right.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries. Cindy, overview of preliminary capital budget miscellaneous fund for FY 2016, 2017. Cindy Arnold, you're up.
I'll keep it short, since she's got all the bad guys.
By reason, we're done with that, I've got a girl graduating from Bethel tonight out of OBU, so I'm keeping an eye on the time.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, I thought we were just trying to thunder on through this. I'll make it short, okay, I promise. Some of the slides are small, I apologize, but it's hardly a don't- for honestly. You guys have copies of the presentation. These are some of the miscellaneous funds that we budget for, they really, we don't do a whole lot with any of them. The street and alley fund, we collect some other from taxes, and it basically pays for the streetlights around town. E911 fund, that collects the 911 fees, and we pretty much pay for telephones and dispatch. Revolving well and gas, economic development, that funds Shawnee Economic Development Foundation in sister cities, stand-in here, hotel motel. Everybody familiar with the hotel motel, it's 5% surcharge. BSI gets 94%, and 5% goes to SMA, and we get 1% administration fee. Place and Fire Fund, that gets 6.25% of the third penny, and that's penny spelled wrong, I just realized, transfers back to the general fund. The Tiff District and the Workman's Comp, so, and we're self-funded on that. And we budget $650,000 that we take from the different departments to fund the Workman's Comp.
On those permit fees on gas wells, Cindy, educate me.
There are some fees we're gone on here, the fees... There's just, there's some gas wells around, and they pay a permit fee, and we put it in a fund.
Just off Wallace.
Yeah, it's some...
It's a $250 a year permitting fee, and that fee then is available for use if we have an issue where we need to buy some foam or anything for firefighting on one of those wells, or if we have an incident, one of those where we need to hire someone to come in and assist us, consulting engineer with dealing with correcting the problems of that incident, and that fee's available to offset those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we budget, just in case something happens, it's not very large, you know, about $10,000 a year.
We have insurance on that kind of stuff.
Okay, this is, okay, the current, this is the current, this is Fund 301, this is our capital fund, this is the one that we all talk about most of the time. This is our current debt, Motorola, is $320,000 a year, that doesn't pay off until December The pool loan is December 2020, and the expo loan pays off this December. This $416,000 is only half of the debt service that we have been paying. So, that has allowed us to have a little more flexibility in the capital. I get impatient, and I hit it twice. It's gonna stop walking.
That's pretty fast.
No, I never, it's not. Okay, see, it's...
It's pretty tight.
You're further out.
Now it's moving just by itself. See, it's moving it, okay, there we go. Sorry. Revenue is the sales tax, that is part of the third penny, we collect about $2.4 million in sales tax. SMA, when we did the expo loan, there was a partial refund of an SMA loan, and this is half of the debt service for the year. And then we actually do get interest, but that's from the Oklahoma Tax Commission, not from the banks. Okay, these are just some of the projects, I'm really not gonna go into detail too much. The municipal cores ask for body scanner, information technology, these are straight, most of them are annual replacements. We are human resources, we're gonna get it, we plan on getting a new vehicle, and we're going to put that vehicle and keep it in commission, but it's gonna go to IT. The police, he's asked for four units, and we asked for eight, but he's getting four, with the full equipment. I don't wanna go all in on, you have...
And we can read through this, if we have any questions, we can email you.
Yes. So this is just, this is just basic operation stuff, so you, yes, you can ask. One thing I do wanna mention, at the retreat we had at the expo, we had talked about a couple of fire trucks that we need. We've put this, it's $198,000, that's a lease purchase, which may come out, depending on how we decide to finance the building, and we might wrap in the cars, but I wanted to have an earmarker. And if that gets put into a loan, our debt service probably wouldn't be due until next fiscal year, and we would really like to maybe possibly do the Santa Fe Depot roof with the extra money.
Is that, that's one unit?
Two, that's two units, that's a lease payment, I think it's for 10 years. Because the two trucks, one's like $550,000 and one's over a million. This is the ladder truck. But that's, I mean, that's, that will come up for more discussion later.
So that's two engines inside?
Yeah, it's one engine, it's Engine 2, they call it Engine 2, the replacing Engine 2, and a ladder truck, it's two vehicles.
Oh, okay.
They just call it.
One's called an engine and one's called a ladder, but they're...
We're replacing Engine 2, yes.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
It's firefighter talk.
Yeah.
Okay, real quick, some of the custom we've done, two police cars, the station intercoms, the conference table downstairs, the Santa Fe Depot, but that might come back if we figure out with the trucks, and the lighting at the ball field. The summary revenue, the debt service we owe our projects, that leaves us $1,500, but this does not include fund balance or rollovers, because it, when we did this, when I did this, it was kinda early in the year, we're still wrapping up projects.
Lighting at the ball field or lighting at the expo?
At a ball field. I was meant to ask you that. Lions Club.
Lions Club ball field?
Yeah, there's an additional, Lions Hall needs to be installed.
Okay.
One field out there is not completely lit.
This is the street fund, Fund 302, and it is beginning fund balance of this year. We did incorporate John's, is almost $8 million. Sales tax we're gonna collect, the interest, and transferred from SMA. This, the $600,000 is from the original Pick-a-Foo project, they owed him more than $28 million. Total revenue is 11, expenses are eight, and these are the projects which you've had. If you have any questions, please ask me or email John.
How much do we have for sidewalks?
Huh?
$228,000?
I can't read it.
$250,000, and then they take out ramps, which is about half a million dollars.
Good, that's good.
Any questions? And if you don't, call me, email me.
What about the, are you gonna talk about this?
That's another.
That's another?
Yeah, and I know there's about two pages that you guys are interested in that one.
Yeah.
Real quick, sales tax?
Yes, go ahead.
I started a new form, and it's pretty landscape for me, but May sales tax collected was $1,493,000, and I've given you a breakout, how it's divided among the funds. And I'm also including the use tax. That was in the packet, and the use tax this month was $114,000, or 55% higher than last year. So, and then this one...
How much higher?
Huh?
What'd you say, 65%?
55% higher, use tax. Use tax is a lot smaller than...
Yeah, it's small numbers.
55% higher, yeah. Like, last May, we only collected $74,000, this May, we collected $114,000.
Yeah, it's small numbers, it goes up a little.
Okay, every penny counts. And these are the top retail trades compared to last year this year, so, any questions?
We're still doing pretty good, though, overall, on those types.
We are actually, we are one of the few communities, we are up $26,000, or 1.83%. We're holding our own.
Any questions?
Was that fast enough?
Fast enough, thank you, appreciate it. Moving right along. Consideration of bids. Item A, FY 15-16 sidewalk ADA handicap ramp project, various locations, contract number CSOPW15-03, open. Register the honors, huh? Wow.
Okay, the bids for the sidewalk and ADA handicap ramps project, we had two bids. The first was from Rudy Construction Company out of Oklahoma City for $546,350. The second one was Parathon Construction LLC out of Edmond, Oklahoma, their bid was $311,550. We would request that this be referred to the next meeting, so we can move this over.
Need a motion to...
So moved.
Second. Oh, let's vote. Postponed for next meeting, I would say.
Yes.
Will you give an estimate at the June 6 meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Motion carries. Next item, item B. You ready, Rick?
Yes, sir. This is a bid opening for the fiscal year 15-16 Rehab Concrete Streets project. We had two bids for this also. The first bid was from GCC Enterprises Incorporated out of Dallas, Texas, $470,850. The second bid was Parathon Construction LLC out of Edmond, $337,750. We would also ask that this be continued to the next meeting.
So need a motion to...
Second.
You got them, fellas? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 14, city manager, new business.
Sir, Vice Mayor, there is no new business tonight.
Item 15, commissioner's comments.
I think, does this one pull open this weekend, Saturday? The municipal hold?
The 20th, right?
I hope everybody's in bathing suit shape for that. And is the Avitas Foundation, the Health Week kickoff coming up also?
Yes, next week.
Next week? Okay. Okay, and congratulations to our new police chief.
Yeah.
That's all.
Keith?
Hey Shawnee High School, won a 5A state baseball championship.
Two years in a row.
About that.
Two years in a row.
Yeah, two years in a row, that was good.
Great for Shaw.
Several things. I would like to thank the Shawnee Municipal Authority, Steve Nelmes and his team. There was an incident at the absentee Shawnee Tribe, and the governor was off-site, and she tasked me with the project, and Steve did very good work, and I appreciate that. The Emerald Forest Neighborhood Association, Dr. Chris Aston and Bonnie Boone have gone to a lot of work and effort in regard to the planning unit development, R2, R1, all of the language in regard to the independence development that had been done by the Land Run Group. And Land Run tried, they did what they could in regard to working with our neighborhood, our neighborhood... Our neighborhood had made a decision, and, and we need to listen to our constituents. And Dr. Aston and Dr. Boone did incredible work in, in getting the opinion of our neighborhood out there. Trash Off Day, James. We had a, one church group, and I still don't recall their name, but they just did an incredible job out there. They were so energetic, and they were so lively and so enthusiastic, and it was just amazing that they were out there doing trash instead of some other effort out there. They seemed to really be enjoying themselves, and they did a great job. And beautification committee has a number of actions that they're going to be putting forward, I think, to the city in regard to some planning efforts. And I'd like to, again, reinforce the planning department. I think Justin De Bruin and his limited team does good work. I appreciate all of your efforts. I want you to know that I think that when you're fully staffed, you'll be incredible. And again, I'd like to encourage whatever support that you need to be included in your budget to get your codes up to date. I think that's very much needed, and I think we need to get that done. And I'm sure that Cindy and Justin will work with you in however that needs to be done. But we need those codes up to date for you. I think, oh, just as a plug, I would like to, for our Bryan Street, I'd love to see some lights along that pathway. We've got so many young families out walking, and it gets a little scary in the evenings because I still see runners and I still see a number of individuals that are out enjoying that new sidewalk, but they need a path to allow for them to see as they're going along it.
Thank you. Michael?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say, next week, on the 25th, at 5:30, there's going to be a senior stroll, starting at the Senior Center over here. Kate Joyce would like to see everybody come out and participate in that. It's a good chance to, to meet folks in the community and, yeah, maybe sweat a little bit. May 31st, there's going to be a National Ride for the Wall. That's where a group of veterans, a large group of veterans, are going to start in California and ride all the way out to Washington DC. They're stopping in Shawnee for burgers. They're also going to stay the night here. This is the, the only town in Oklahoma they're going to stay the night in. So, May 31st, they'll be riding on Harleys and whatever. It's right in time for Memorial Day, so I'd like to also thank everyone out there that has veterans that have served. And also, I'd like for you guys to remember our fallen brothers and sisters in uniform. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I declare commission meeting closed and open the Shawnee Airport Authority. We still have a quorum. Consider approval of consent agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries. New business.
No new business, sir. One administrative report.
Okay, Mr., Mr. English.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, this is an update on something I touched on a couple of weeks ago. Of course, we looked at the airport budget last week, and there was a, a little uncertainty on, on maybe on, on some equipment that we might need to purchase this year. So I kind of want to update on that. And then per Commissioner Dykstra's request, I wanted to share just a few things concerning the potential T-hanger project that we, that we could be doing a couple of years down the road. What it would mean, who are the parties involved, and what the cost would be to each of those parties. But the, the FAA, let's see, I've got, there we go. And this is, this is in your packet. I, I wrote you a pretty lengthy memo. So I'll, I'll just kind of go through that just real briefly and, and touch on some key points. And I know Commissioner Hall, you weren't here a couple of weeks ago, so I know this might be relatively new. But basically, as you know, the FAA has a study out right now, and it's open to public comment, and, and I'll get to that a little bit later. But they are trying to, to determine if they are going to decommission our outer marker on our ILS, our instrument landing system. And just to remind you, the ILS, the instrument landing system, allows pilots to come in in inclement weather, poor visibility. They can depend on their, their instruments to fly into Shawnee. It's something that's very beneficial to the airport. There's basically three components to an ILS. There's a glide slope, a localizer, and an outer marker. The glide slope pretty much tells the pilot if they're too high, if they're too low in regards to the runway. And so, and the localizer will tell them if they're too far to the left, too far to the right, so it can line up right on that center line. So you've got a, you've got a horizontal indicator. It all just shows up on your dash in your plane. So you've got a horizontal indicator, and you've got a vertical indicator. And the idea is to get those two lined up together, crosshairs, and so that means you're, you're dead on. The, the last component for the outer marker, all that really does is give you your distance to the runway. Most modern aircraft are equipped with GPS. That's going to tell them what their distance is from the runway. But kind of the older ones, the aircraft that haven't quite gone up to date, they still rely on distance measuring equipment, which is what that outer marker is. And so a lot of guys can still use the ILS, and they don't necessarily need that. But the FAA technically determines that if you don't have those three components all in place, technically, your ILS is out of service. And, and they'll publish that, it out of service on, on public websites and, and publications and things like that. So it's important to have those. So right now, they're determining whether or not to, to decommission that.
So if they decommission it, will they change how they publish?
They would. Yeah. From my understanding, if they decommission it, that would pretty much eliminate our approach, which they would say the ILS at Shawnee is out of service. And so people would see that and, and know that, well, I can't fly into Shawnee in bad weather. They don't have the capability to do so.
Is there a, are they going to require that everyone had GPS, like retrofitted onto their planes?
No, not, not at this point. I think probably, if this were happening maybe 10 or 15 years down the road, it wouldn't be such a big issue.
Because everybody...
Because everybody's probably going to have it. But there's still some lag on... Yeah, exactly.
So, do we...
Avionics is probably the most expensive part of an airplane. Keeping that avionics up to date gets expensive, so...
Definitely. So what's our position? Do we not want it decommissioned?
We don't want it decommissioned.
So is there anything you can do to...
There's, there's four scenarios to, to what, what can happen with this. The FAA can, can decommission it. If we don't do anything, we lose our ILS approach. That's probably worst-case scenario. Scenario two, and, and keep in mind, this, this study is still on a very low level. I've, I've spoken to with, to higher FAA offices, and, and it hasn't reached them yet. So there's, there's still going to be a determination on it, and so we still have some time and, and some feedback from them before we have to realize what we need to do. But scenario two would be, they could decommission it, and what would we, what we would do then is ask Oklahoma City Approach, which controls airspace between airports, to continue to maintain or establish communication with, with flights coming in who are using the ILS, and, and ask them to, to use their existing radar to kind of guide them in. It, it's unlikely that that would happen. We're kind of right on the edge of, of, of their airspace. And it's, it's not that convenient for pilots to do that. So that's unlikely. The third scenario is that the study reaches the higher offices, and they, and they determine that, hey, you guys need to ma, they tell their techs, you need to maintain this. It would be very detrimental to Shawnee, and they continue to do so at, at no cost to us. Probably the most likely possibility is that they go ahead and decommission it. And we would, there is an, an equipment upgrade to our ILS system that would replace the capabilities of that outer marker. And it's called a DME or Distance Measuring Equipment. And we would purchase that. It would go, it would be installed on the airport, so we wouldn't have to worry about being on somebody's private property or having a lease, which would be great. And it does the exact same thing that it does. It's just, it's just a, a better piece of equipment that they don't have to rely on. Most airports in Oklahoma that have an ILS are an ILS slash DME ILS system. If you fly into Wiley Post or...
What kind of cost are you talking about?
The cost, got a quote back today for the system alone, it's about $55,000. It's doable.
Can we install it?
And, and we would, to do that, we, what's called a, we would get into an agreement with the FAA called a reimbursable agreement. It's kind of misleading. They don't, they're not really reimbursing us, but we would pretty much pay for the equipment, hand it over to them, they would install it, and they would do all the upkeep and maintenance on it.
Well, that's probably what we should pursue then.
That's probably what we should pursue. My recommendation, because it, it kind of goes with the budget, is I think we should adopt the budget that we proposed a couple of weeks ago. We've got until July 1 is when the study closes. We kind of hold off on making any huge major purchases or expenses while we wait for this determination. Now, it, it very well could be a couple, a couple of years before they do so. But as, as long as we make this purchase, probably within the next couple of years, I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, we need to get it in the budget at some point. It's a better piece of equipment, and you know it's going to happen at some point.
Yeah.
Are there grants available? I mean, just like we got help for other things, are there grants out there?
On this particular piece of equipment, no. No, there is not. No.
When are they going to, like, when is FAA going to turn it over to the cities? Or back away from it? Like you were saying, it's...
Decommission it.
Decommission? That's, it's tough to say. I, I know there's, this has happened at other airports, and it could, it could be up to a year. It could be up to two years before they, it's, everything with the FAA is a long, it's a long process. So we've got time.
But you see it in the pipeline?
It's in the pipeline. I'm still kind of waiting to hear from the, from the upper management types. But it's, the study is out there. In your memo, there is an email address, and I'm going to share that with all of our airport tenants and stakeholders to, to go on there and publicly comment on this study and, and kind of voice their concerns.
Should we also, from the city's standpoint, consider doing a resolution or a letter of support in regard to the, the position that we support?
I think that would be advantageous for, for sure.
From the municipal authority or something?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I've...
Or airport authorities.
Our, our state leaders and even one of our state senators that actually knows about this issue, and I think they're going to be supporting it.
We don't mind them decommissioning it at all if they'll buy us the new...
Exactly.
Is, is there no, like, service agreement you can get with some company to, like, fix the stuff we already have or just keep it, I guess, like a, you know, trade-in type?
Not that I know of. The old outer marker that sits five miles, I don't know if there's a...
Once they declare obsolete, then that means it won't be, can't be used anywhere, so...
Yeah.
I just, Shawnee, but McAllister has one, Fox City has one, and so forth. So once I, ILS is declared, you know...
It's time to...
Will you give us an advance notice that it's going to be decommissioned, that you could make the switch to the DME?
Uh, oh, yeah, absolutely. I don't think that, I, I don't believe they would leave us high and dry like that. If they're going to make that determination, they'd probably give us enough notice.
Took almost, what, five years to get the GPS approved for landing for, for ILS? So it took almost five years to do that, so...
I just, I hope they let us know sooner than later, because as you're going to see in the next little part of my update, you know, if we're really going to do this T-hanger project, we're going to need to...
Generate...
Reserve some money for that and not get tied up buying this stuff. So it, it may be beneficial to go ahead and budget for this item, maybe if not this year, the next year, because those funds are going to be available. So I think we, I think we adopt this year's budget as is. Wait a little bit before we make big purchases, and then...
Price could go down too.
Well, I, I, along, I think from what I heard Commissioner Hall say a while ago, from the budgetary standpoint and from the planning standpoint, I'd like to strongly encourage that we look at setting some funds aside in the budget to prepare for this kind of action and not have you take from the updates that are already needed and long overdue.
Half this year, half the next year, something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, mister.
All right. One more item, if I may. And if you don't, this, I put this in your memo. If you don't have it, I'd be happy to pass it out.
I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, you got it. Like I said, Commissioner Doctor asked if I'd share this information. His, his, his statement was, in a, in a perfect world, what, what would this look like? If we had all the money available and all the parties agreed to it, what would it look like? And I, I think this is, this is what it would look like. We break it into four, into three phases, starting in 2017, 2018. We do that in phases, so we can break the cost up, so we can actually forward it. The first phase would be our engineers going in and designing everything ahead of time. All of this is reimbursable by, by, by 90% by the FAA. And for that reason, that 2017, 2018, because we'd only be having to pay $7,600 or 10%, you know, we can buy that piece of equipment that year too, that DME. Phase two would actually be the construction of the T-hangers with the, of course, administration and inspection from our engineers. And that would be the time when the city would have to kick in, kick in the substantial amount of money for that project. And then 2019 or 2020, I don't see why we couldn't construct the T-hangers the same year as phase two. But that would be, because those monies would be, would be available from a third party. And I can go ahead and say right now, because we've had public meetings about Shawnee Industrial Authority, has been very open to being a partner and helping finance those, which, and so right now, we're, right now, we're in the midst of getting a contract or an, an agreement with them to state their interest. So the total cost of the project's about $1.1 million. So how is that going to break out by each party? There we go. And it didn't put my values up there, did it? What happened, Steve? I got it right here, Justin. Well, you all have it on, in front of you. There you go. I'll pass these out. Sorry about that. So the FAA is, is going to cover the majority of the cost. Like I said, they're going to pay about 90%. And they're going to cover all the, the taxiways and the ramps that the T-hangers would actually sit on. And these are, these are pretty rough estimates, and of course, we like to estimate high, just, just to be on the safe side. But roughly about $625,000. The airport can budget to help that match, about $72,000. And then the city would have to come back and contribute about $114,000 during that fiscal year, 2018, 2019. It's easier said than done, but we can have those talks when, next year, when we, when we sit down and, and vote on this and see if we can, see if we can work that out. And then there's the, the loan engraved, that's, that's the estimate cost for the, for the T-hangers. And that would be what the SIA would, would loan to us.
What's the rental charges you're looking at for, or how fast would it take to get a return on investment on the T-hangers?
Plus about, about 12 years.
About 12 years?
Yeah, because we would build 10 units, and I like to think we could get about $300 per month, per unit. So about, what does that come out to, 30, 30?
I don't do public math.
30, 30,000. Yeah. So about 10 to 15 years.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
But how long is this loan you're, you're thinking of, the 350,000?
What, uh... How long would it, well, it would, of course, it would take...
You're thinking 10 to 12?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But to actually start making money, it'll be after that time?
Yeah, yeah. So we'd, we'd be using the revenue off of the, the T-hangers to pay off that loan.
To maintain it, to ensure it?
Yeah, that too. Yeah, that's...
Can you get all that stuff in another time? Just so I can, like, see pictures?
Sure.
But there's other benefits to the city too, to have that, that facility out there.
Oh, yeah. And it's, it's, it's the only way that there's, you know, like I said a long time ago, it's been decades since there's been hangars built at the airport. And it's, it's because it's difficult to do.
You're talking the doors open?
Yeah, I, I believe so. Either, either...
Well, we needed the hangars when I came back here in 1996. I had to take my plane to Seminole because we didn't have any hangars. So we still, we haven't solved that problem yet.
Huge waiting list.
A lot of pilots in this area?
A lot, yeah, a lot of pilots and in the surrounding area. So it gets frustrating. And my job, I always have to tell people no, so it would, it would be nice. And, and if for some rea, there's always the option of actually doing this project, phase one and phase two. If for some reason, the, the loan doesn't, say it falls through or something like that, maybe we entertain the idea of leasing that property and letting somebody build. Of course, we're not making that much money off it, but we can, we get planes in and get business, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, adjourned, adjourned at Airport Authority, and convene the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and still have a forum, uh, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Let's vote. Motion carries, overview of preliminary Shawnee Municipal Authority budget FYI sixteen seventeen, Cindy Arnold.
I'm not going to go into large detail, because you have the write-up and everything, I did put on the dais, this is a zero-to-five-year plan of the project that needs to be done, quite a large sum, um, I'm going to jump, do it, basically, the operational is the same, um, the South Plant Headworks, these are the projects that we need to do in the next five years, in the budget this year, we have budgeted for all the engineering to break down the contract, to get good construction costs, so, um, and then hopefully, with some of the numbers coming in pretty good, we go out with our P, we can do some of them in-house, I don't know, this is the, really, the explanation, which I handed to you today, you've had this before, it's just an updated, but I wanted to, basically, in the SMA budget, all the engineering is budgeted for, and then we're doing our normal rehab and stuff like that, but if you have any questions on the SMA, or would like me to talk more about it next time, that's fine, but I know, I don't want to read you the PowerPoint, you have the PowerPoint also, but I knew this was the important part.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Cindy, new business?
No new business, sir.
All right, we stand adjourned.